1:30, so we will begin our meeting for February the 19th, which is our postponed or recess meeting to the 16th. First point to have Ms. Hardison, who is on the phone, call the roll before I call the meeting to order verifying, since we have people who are here by video or by telephone, that we have a forum. Ms. Hardison, could you do that?
Alderman Carver. Alderman Sistrunk.
Here.
Alderman Little. Alderman Walker.
Here.
Alderman Beatty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Alderman Vaughn.
Here.
All right, everyone who's present or available via video or telephone at this time, I will call our now recessed meeting of February the 19th to order. We will stand to the Pledge of Allegiance, follow that with an invocation by Alderman Carver and a moment of silence. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Let us pray. Most holy all wise, knowing our own power, all seeing, all hearing, all understanding God. Father God, again, as a few of your handmaid servants, Father, that you allow your angels to watch over through this snowstorm, and you allowed us and blessed our hearts and made it back to this appointed place. To tell of these a fire from the city. We thank you, Father God, for appointing us and putting up this position, but most of all, we ask you that you would speak to our heart, that it be figured that we make, Father God, in the glory of thy name. We thank you for your angels and watch over us, Father God, from our early distance to right now. We thank you. We ask you that you would please forgive us all our sins, those unknown and unknowns sinning in our city. And, Lord, we pray now that you will just bless us as we go into this business. Tell of these a fire from the city. But we thank you for what all you have allowed us to achieve within these four years. We thank you. We give praise and honor and glory to you because you are the almighty, almighty, all-knowing, all-powerful, seeing, all-giving, all-understanding God. You say it in your word that we have not because we ask not. Father, we ask you in the name of Jesus that you will bless us. For when the Jesus reigns, we give all praise and honor and glory to you because of who God is. Thank you for being our God and your servant, being our Father and your children. Thank you for controlling our destiny, not leaving us, but taking our whole family. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being here today. I know this is kind of an unusual, unusual time for us to be having a meeting, but it has also been an unusual week. So item on the agenda will be approval of the official agenda with consented items. Do we have any changes? And because it is a telephonically or video attendance, we will be calling the roll and each person who wishes to speak, I'll be going down the line with each ward. So just to be clear about how we'll be handling this. So Alderman Carver, anything that you wish to add or change on the agenda?
Come on.
All right, thank you. Alderman Sistrunk.
Good man.
Alderman Little.
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
Out of non-mayor's business, out of A and B, there's no objections.
For consent?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Do I have any objections to item eight? Are you going on consent under mayor's business? All right, seeing none, rules with those on consent. Anything? All right, item three, anyone have any objections to item three? All right, hearing none, item three will go on consent. All right, thank you. All right, Alderman Walker, anything on the agenda for you to either discuss, I'm sorry, to remove or?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. In which case, we have an official agenda with consented items as revised. Could I have a motion to approve?
Please approve.
A motion from Alderman. Over to other second.
Sure.
Second from Alderman Beatty. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yes.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yay.
All right, it is unanimous. The official agenda with consented items as revised is approved, and I will now read those consented items. Consideration of the minutes of the January 19th, 2021 meeting of the mayor and the board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the January 29th, 2021 work session of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the February 2nd, 2021 meeting of the mayor and the board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Under mayor's business, we have item A, which is consideration of advertising for proposals for a sculpture to be created commemorating Cool Papa Bell for the Cornerstone Park Pavilion. Item B is consideration of the resolution declaring an emergency based on the weather-related events commencing at 2:00 PM on February the 13th, 2021. Under board business, we have consideration of an agreement with the municipal Democratic Executive Committee. Two is consideration of an agreement with the municipal Republican Executive Committee. And item three is consideration of an agreement with Waste Pro for recycling program. Item six is consideration of a board resolution thanking and commending the Army and Air National Guard on their work to administer COVID shots at the Mississippi Horse Park located in Starkville, Mississippi. Under department business, we have community development and planning. Number one is consideration of the re-up Dr. Evan Kecock to the History Preservation Commission with a term set to start February 16th, 2021, and expire on February 16th, 2023. Item two is consideration of applying for a $7,500 certified local government grant with the Mississippi Department of Archives and History, MDAH, with a 2021-22 fiscal year with a 50-50 match of $7,500. Number three is consideration of calling for two public hearings for amending the Unified Development Code and updating the technical codes. Under engineering, item one is consideration of acceptance of the low bid of $1,180,372.65 for the 2021 street improvement project from Falcon Contracting and authorizing the mayor to execute a construction contract. And number two is consideration of acceptance of the low bid of $878,096.26 for the Owest Point Road Bridge project from Phillips Contracting and authorizing the mayor to execute a construction contract. Under finance administration, we have item two, which is acceptance of the January 2021 financial statement. Item three is consideration of the lowest bid for financing from Bank First in the amount of $433,734 over three years to be made quarterly in advance beginning April of 2021, at 1.09% interest for the lease purchase of 14 2021 Dodge Chargers to be used by the Starkville Police Department. Under HR, number one is consideration to approve a temporary pay increase for Megan Ward in Starkville Utilities. Number two is request authorization to hire Kenneth Rogers as a maintenance worker for the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Number three is request authorization to hire Erica Rivers as a marketing and sponsorship manager in the Parks and Recreation Department. Number four is request authorization to hire Marvin, I didn't remember how to figure out how to pronounce his name. His name is C.U.N.G.I.O.U.S. and Austin Taylor as maintenance workers in the Starkville Utilities Department. And under information technology, we have request approval for the yearly purchase of maintenance and consulting labor hours with Darnar Computers. From the police department, police division, we have request approval to allow Officer Matthew Lasker to attend SEAL Training Officer Certification Class through the Law Enforcement Training Academy at Camp Shelby, Mississippi, on 3:30 through 4:01:21 in Hattiesburg, Mississippi, at a cost not to exceed $480. Under the Utilities Department, we have number one, request authorization to accept the lowest and best quote from Wilson Tree Service, LLC, to perform tree removal and stump grinding for Phase One waterline replacement on North Montgomery, Crete Street to Octavia Hall Drive, in the amount of $9,000. Number two is request authorization to enter into a license agreement with the Starkville Octavia Hall Consolidated School District, S.O.C.S.D., to allow for joint use of poles for S.O.C.S.D. to install fiber along city-owned poles. And last but not least, number three, consideration of acceptance of the low quote of $7,800 submitted by Warren, Inc., for a dump body assembly to be attached to a recently purchased truck, cab, and chassis, 60 in cab to axle, $14,001 to $16,000 GVWR regular cab by Starkville Utilities. And that concludes the consented items.
Thank you, Mayor.
That was my pleasure. Poor man, I've got to learn how to pronounce his name. Um, all right, the next item we have in first list is going to be announcements and comments, and I'm going to make several because this has been a week it was. Um, this has obviously been a very strange week for all of us from beginning to end. We had a holiday on Monday, and then we've been far better holidaying through up until now. Um, but we've had people who have been out working and doing yeoman's work for the city. So I want to say a special thank you to our utilities crews, which are both our electric and our water crews. If those who weren't impacted didn't know it, our water crew was out at midnight last night repairing a water main leak, as well as yesterday afternoon, early morning, preparing a water main leak. And of course, our electric crews were handling the electric outages that we had in the northern half of town anyway. And then our streets department is out cutting the tree that caused the electric problem. So it has been a domino effect for all the things, but our guys have been doing extremely good work. We really appreciate it because without them, we would still be in the dark in some cases and probably without water. So all those things that Texas has had in trouble with, we have been very fortunate in having a wonderful set of city employees who've done that work for us. Um, and we also are acknowledging Ms. Sistrunk's resolution that she crafted for those who are working for the COVID relief effort in getting all of the shots down at the horse park and some at the hospital. We have great thanks for that. Hopefully, we will all be inoculated here before too long, and we'll all be out of masks and ready to go on and be having our events and that sort of thing. We also have a group of people in town who's been very helpful with getting people to places they need to go, for example, dialysis. There's a Starkville Strong group that has been very instrumental in helping people get where they need to go in a critical time such as now. So our streets have been difficult, but they are working now, and we seem to be able to safely pass them. Our residential garbage folks are out today being very cautious, and they will be out tomorrow. So those who have a Friday route are being picked up today. We had a late start at 10 o'clock, so they will be going probably closer until dark or thereabout. And then we will be doing it again tomorrow. Those who are on a Thursday route will be picked up tomorrow. The landfill has been closed all week until today, and so we will, they are going to be open tomorrow, and so we will make that run tomorrow and try to make a dent in what we've all accumulated over the last week or so. So anyway, and those are my, those are my comments. And again, thank you to all who keep us, who keep us safe, and that, and I didn't say to the police department because y'all have been out there doing the same thing. My apologies, as has the fire department. So all of our emergency services in multiple ways. So thank you. Um, all right, anyone from the board? Alderman Carver, anything you wish to add?
Just more of the same comments of what you just said about our police department and just really watching the utilities department work over the last couple of days. I've been thoroughly impressed. Also, the same thing with Starkville Strong, next door, social media outlets. It's just, I guess this would be the first time in our generation with social media that we've had a storm like this. I think the last major one I remember is 94 in Starkville. Um, it's just interesting, I guess, to see the trend, what's trending and what people use to disseminate information and how that happens nowadays. And just to be patient with us and the city, the police and fire and utility, I promise are doing all they can do. We may have some more water leaks, water main breaks, things like that in the next couple of days as this starts to thaw. And just to be patient with the city, the city workers, I promise you, and people know that for the general, but the comments are mostly overwhelming and positive, but just to remember those guys and ladies that have been behind the scenes this whole time, doing the best they can do, and they continue to do the best they can do. So just to be aware of that, and again, thank you for all that they've done. City employees, we've had some of the best city employees in the state of Mississippi, and it's been very evident over the last couple of days. So I just thank those men and women. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman Sistrunk?
Um, more of the same. I'm very grateful to see our community stepping up, helping each other. It's what community's all about. The city can't do everything, obviously, and it's good to see neighbors helping neighbors, people helping strangers. Um, it's really gratifying. I wanted to speak a little bit more about the resolution the mayor alluded to. I'm one of the lucky ones who's now had two COVID shots, and I've gotten through that process up close and personal. Um, it's required a lot of coordination on many levels, state and local. The Mississippi Department of Health and our local health department were a big part of that. The local emergency management group was a big part of that, but did not have the bandwidth to make, having a drive-through vaccination spot a possibility. The National Guard, both Army and Air National Guard stepped up, provided the manpower, the bandwidth that we needed to process those shots. And it's been a tremendously smooth process. Big kudos. And we're going to send their boss a letter with a resolution saying how grateful we are for their help.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Little?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am, other than to say again, I appreciate all the city workers that have worked so hard and diligently this week, and will continue over the next few days as the, as we work our way out of this winter storm. So thank you, thank you to them.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Beatty?
Mayor, we have times to take our city services for granted. We'll get in a situation like we've been in the past week, and we understand then how important cities have really provided services and professionalism, which our city utility department, police department, fire department, etc., provide, um, street department, provide services to our citizens. I just think they've done our same job this week.
Yeah, thank you, sir, and they have. Vice Mayor Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to just take a few moments of some comments. Mayor, I'd like to take this moment of personal privilege to publicly commend Mayor Spruill, Alderman Henry and Vaughn, Sr., and the new incoming Alderman for Ward Three, Mr. Jeffrey Rupp. Mayor, it is a very high and monumental honor to be re-elected without any opposition whatsoever. To be re-elected without any opposition clearly signifies, reflects, and indicates that your constituents are extremely satisfied with your leadership, service, work, and performance. A job well done to Mayor Spruill, Alderman Henry and Vaughn, Sr., Ward Seven, and to the new and coming Alderman from Ward Three, Mr. Jeffrey Rupp. Mayor, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you. I appreciate that. And I know Alderman Vaughn does as well. We appreciate the compliment. Thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mayor, I just want to thank our service, they did a great job. Most of all, I just thank the local department because we had very limited outage. If that big tree hadn't fell up there on West Main, we wouldn't have too much outage nowhere all around. But just come from preparing, and where Mr. Terry kept the new guys, where they prepared for this, where a lot of cities don't prepare for landfill hangover, utility wise, and I think we had a lot of limit to that. And it just was a blessing that we didn't have much outage. We should have, we could have, but it was just all because of the planning. But thank all our employees that was out doing the snow, everywhere, I saw you out. It's just so much our employees who have, pray for our employees and why they're trying to do this because they can't be at every place at the same time. You just have to wait till you're trying to get there. They gonna get there. I promise you, they gonna get there. And thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Alderman Vaughn. All right, next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is the opportunity for a citizen to have access to the board. You can, you have three minutes in which you can talk about any subject you like, and we will time that, but now is the opportunity, if anyone has anything they wish to say to the board. Anyone? All right, seeing none, I will close it for citizen comments. We have no public appearances this evening. We do have three public hearings, and I will hold those. The first one is a public hearing, consideration of demolition under Mississippi Code 211911 to determine whether the building located at 307 Apple Street, with parcel number 1800-116.00 as a minute of health, safety, and welfare. So this will be first presentation by y'all? Well, we will, we will enjoy. Thank you. See, I want to go ahead and provide the board a little bit of background, and just to, just to tell you, you can be brief because this is one we have seen before, and these are coming back around again because we thought we'd be able to burn them, and we were unable to burn them. So they're coming back so that we can then begin a demolition process. So chief?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you. Uh, this is a repetitive process. Our first, uh, up under Mississippi Code 211911, we have two property parcels. Um, if you can't get to the next spot, will be 722 Vine Street. And, um, I'll click down again, please. And you can see by the state of the property, this has been ongoing. It's, I think, the first process began on this March 29th of 2018, and it's carried over. Obviously, by the Department of State and the Police Department, we picked this back up. There's been no changes on this property. Uh, it is still, well, the picture says so. Uh, it's in a rough state for the property owners and for the help, public help. I'll go to the next. Uh, so we, in the PowerPoint here, you're going to see the tax. Uh, although that notification was sent to, click again with. Uh, this was a letter that was sent to begin the process, click again with. Uh, then our certification letter for, for a public hearing, um, in keeping with that statute, click again. And, um, the notices that were posted on the property and in a public area, and of course, this go around Southern City Home realized, and this is Sarah Perez, our new code enforcement Sarah, that utilized the police department for that, sir. And click again. Uh, so no progress. We have not heard from the taxpayer. We've not heard from property. Alderman, we've heard no action, and that's been a continuation since 2018 on this. So we're really in depth, taking action on this property, and that's 722 Vine. Mayor, do you want me to?
Well, let's take this one. Well, actually, that was 722, which was the next one up. But we'll, I tell you what, I'm going to do a reverse. So what we'll do is we'll take one at a time. So since y'all have shown us this one, let's take up item B first, everyone. So I'll hold that public hearing first. Mr. Latimer, there's no issue with swapping those around, I assume?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, well, let me say, that's on, that is in Ward Seven, so Alderman Vaughn, that is your ward, and it's over there by Sonic, which I used to see it a good bit. So we determined, the fire department checked it and determined that they were unable to burn, which is why we are now finding ourselves bringing this back and having to go through a demolition process. So what I will do at this point is I will open it as a public hearing and see if there's anyone wishes to speak to this item, and then after that, I will close it, and we will go to the board for any discussion. So anyone wishing to speak to this item, I'm opening it as a public hearing now. This is for 722 Vine Street. Anyone wishing to speak to it? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. And Alderman Vaughn, I'll start with you, since this is your ward. Do you have anything you wish to comment about this piece of property?
I'm going to move forward.
All right, I have a motion to, okay, I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn, I have a second from Alderman Little, uh, to approve this as a, as a parcel number that is amended to public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Um, Vice Mayor Perkins, anything to speak on this matter?
No, ma'am, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Little?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Sistrunk?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Carver?
No.
All right, I have a motion and a second, if I could, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yay.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yay.
All right, it is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, next one will be the 307 Apple Street, if you would, please. Thank you, chief.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I'll turn to the code enforcement, Sarah Perez.
Hello, ma'am, Vice Mayor and Board of Aldermen. Um, 307 Apple Street has been, through the same process as the 722 Vine, has been started originally on, uh, March 29th of 2018, and, um, we are seeing the same issues with this one, and it is, next was the, uh, that's the original notice, and the notice for public hearing has been sent, and we're done with known words from the owner. Uh, next was, please. The picture here is the hosting of the notice for public hearing, and as you can see from the picture, it has not changed from the original picture since that day.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, um, this one also, same situation, we are unable to burn it, and so we find ourselves now at a point where we will exercise the opportunity to use demolition on it. And so that's the reason it is coming back under this, under this structure. So I will open it as a public hearing, and then after that, we will go to the board for any comments. Um, anyone wishing to speak to this item as it relates to 307 Apple Street? And Alderman Vaughn, I believe this is also your ward. We're cleaning your ward up there. All right, anyone wishing to speak to this? Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and Alderman Vaughn, anything you wish to speak? All right, I have a motion for approval from Alderman Vaughn, and I have a second from Alderman Little. Um, nothing further about it? Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Little?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Sistrunk?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Carver?
No, ma'am.
All right, hearing none, if you would, I have a motion and a second, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Alderman Little. Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yay.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yay.
All right, thank you. It is unanimous, and I would like to commend code enforcement because they're going to be bringing back a number of these same issues to us at the next board meeting, I believe. So thank you very much for getting to work immediately. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Paul. Thank you.
All righty.
That's a long time.
Yes, they have. All right, next item is the third public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 10, alcoholic beverages, Article Two, sale of beer and light wine to exempt brew pubs, small craft breweries located within the city of Starkville Leisure and Recreation District. Sales generate 25% of gross revenue and for related purposes. Um, Chris, you want to provide just a little bit of history of how we have circled back around, researched as a part of the process?
Yes, ma'am, I would be happy to. After the second public hearing, we did go back to the drawing board and really came full circle on this. The draft before you this afternoon is substantially similar to what the draft was for the first public hearing. The draft before you this afternoon does four things. So it's a simple amendment. One, it just sets forth a series of findings of fact to establish the rational basis for this amendment. Two, it adds the definition of brewpub as defined by state law. Three, it adds the definition of small craft brewery as defined by state law. And four, it exempts brewpubs and small craft breweries in the leisure and recreation district from having to adhere to the 25% food sales rule. And it is as simple as that.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Latimer. All right, before I open it as a public hearing, I'm just going to look down the table. Anybody having anything they wish to say about this? Alderman Carver?
I just wanted to get all that written down. The first one, a series of findings and facts support this document. What was number two?
Chris?
Number two was, we added the definition of brewpub under state law.
Thank you.
All right, Alderman Carver, anything else?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Sistrum?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Little?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I will open it as a public hearing. Now is the opportunity for anyone wishing to speak about this matter to come up and, and let the board share concerns or thoughts. And if you would, please identify yourself.
Hi, I am Dean Mohammed Rock. I am co-owner of Mankey Junction Brewery here in Starkville that is located in Ward 7. I am a native of Starkville town, fairly familiar with our ordinances, especially the alcohol one. And we, as a brewery, are against the one that's as written because it provides an exception that does not apply to us. We are the only brewery in Starkville, and there are no brewpubs in Starkville. I think, had I watched all of the public hearings, and I've watched all of the Alderman meetings, I think there is some confusion about what a brewpub is, what a brewery is, and what is allowed by state law. So, in Mississippi, breweries and brewpubs are distinctly different. Breweries have a lot of restrictions on them and regulations, and part of it is related to what our primary business purpose is. In, we started our brewery in Starkville. We knew that Starkville doesn't allow beer sales without food for on-premise consumption. When we started in 2015, breweries weren't allowed to sell beer for on-premise consumption anyway. So it didn't matter. In 2017, we worked with other breweries in the state. We work usually, or very often with other breweries, trying to raise awareness of locally brewed beer and Mississippi-made products. We worked with other breweries in the state to change the state law to allow breweries to sell beer on-premise or on-premise consumption, and to allow brewpubs, even though the law didn't benefit us at all. We didn't push, you know, we didn't come and request and say that we wanted to sell beer for on-premise consumption. Part of that is because really breweries brew beer for distribution. With a law change, it allows breweries to sell a maximum of 10% of what we make on-site for either on or off-premise consumption. 10% of what our production level was prior to COVID would give us about 10 gallons of beer that we could sell a month. So, we don't need an exception, like, it's not something we need to ask for. We're not going to sell 10 gallons of beer. It's not going to be really money for our bottom line. As we grow, 10%, maybe a little more, that maybe we do want to have some, you know, events where we might want to sell a pint of beer. But we're not there yet, so we didn't see a reason to ask. However, now that someone has asked, and they've asked about brewpubs, which are very different, and now we're thinking about including breweries, you know, and rather than come back and address this in another year and try and make another exception or make another change, I think that if we can, you know, really understand what the Mississippi law is about breweries and brewpubs, that we can go ahead and just make a, just change right now, and then we don't have to keep coming back and revisiting this. So, when we saw the, the consideration for allowing brewpubs, we asked, can you allow breweries citywide? Why citywide? Breweries are not going to locate in the leisure and recreation district. The primary purpose of a brewery in Mississippi law, and really our only purpose, is to make beer and sell it to a distributor. So we have our distributors, 18-wheeled trucks, come pick up pints of beer from our brewery and take it to their warehouse here in Starkville, and then take it to restaurants. We don't sell to restaurants, we don't sell to the public. Occasionally, we open and we have some tours. That's allowed by law. And specifically in law, we have to tell you about the brewing process, including all of the materials. We tour you around the brewery, and really it's an educational experience. As part of that experience, we are allowed to provide very limited samples. Six samples in a 24-hour period is in law. So it's not like we're going to open and be a huge bar over there, you know, and we haven't been. I often hear from people who say, or don't even open. It's like, yes, we've been open for five years. I think maybe the fact that you don't hear about us, you haven't, the only reason why the cops have ever been to our place is because we called them for some trespassers on our roof, and we called them for some parking that you use on extra drive. But there's never been beer issues there. In fact, we enjoy a really great relationship with the local restaurant. We participate in the Art Council Sporting Court, you know, because our beer pairs well with all these great foods that are happening. When people come to our tours, we partner with some of the local restaurants where after the six samples, you know, people are ready to have a beer, and they walk over to one of the close restaurants, and they have enjoyed beer. And we know that they're doing it because we eat at those restaurants too, and the owners tell us that they're bringing in our roll sample glass that they get from us. So, we're not a nuisance. We're located on the extra drive in Ward 7. We're outside of the leisure and recreation district. We've been there for five years. We haven't caused problems. A new brewery coming in, they would have to face all the same regulations we have. They would have the same purpose, where they would have those trucks and the suppliers from the end. In fact, as we grow, I don't know how familiar you are with any Mississippi man here, but as we grow, we're really headed towards maybe having to move to the industrial park, and that's where a bigger brewery would be. If you look at Lating Manor, and you look at Southern Prohibition, you look at these larger breweries, that's where they would be. So restricting breweries to the leisure and recreation district, it does not make any sense to me. And I think, it's not really, you know, y'all are, I don't think that y'all are out to be against the local Starkville business. I think it's maybe just some misinformation. So I sent some information where I'm trying to share that with y'all. I'd like to talk with you more and answer any questions that you have. But I guess, you know, that kind of summary, we are against the, if it limits the exception for food for breweries in the leisure and recreation district.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your time. All right, anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Either for or against? Either for or against? All right, seeing none, I will close it, and this is the third public hearing. So, at this point in time, Mr. Latimer, do you have anything you wish to add beyond what we have already discussed?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right, Alderman Carver, anything that you wish to?
Well, I was just going to say, this, this lady, I guess the question is going to be for the city attorney, and I've enjoyed your emails and conversation back and forth. Down the road, and this is no offense, and it is a lot of information we've been researching through. If she wanted to go from a brewery to a brewpub, would the process just be that she'd come make a request to the city, and then we would have an exception at that point? Or, I'm just thinking, you know, this is our only local brewery we have that I'm aware of in this area.
Hi, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, if you, if you'd come forward, please, so we can be sure that you're captured.
I guess my question, make sure we're accommodating y'all as a, as a local business and business owner. What you made your concern is?
Yeah, I'm sure, if I heard right, your question is, if we wanted to convert to a brewpub, what would happen?
If we wanted to convert Starkville to a brewpub, which has happened in other, when we started there, we were the 13th Mississippi brewery, now there's four. And a lot of several of them have converted to brewpubs when the law changed. And I guess for us, part of it is that that's not our vision. But that doesn't mean that someone else couldn't come in and try to open up a brewery and then maybe convert to a brewpub. The process for converting to a brewpub, we had a federal license from the, the TCB. They had tobacco tax, beer, like the ATF, heavy firearms too. So all of them are kind of, you have to get a brewer's notice from them. You would have to file for new breweries, because all of this is for a brewery, not for yourself. Once we got that notice, we could contact the state. We have a $1,000 a year brewery permit. The brewpub permit is also $1,000, so we would have to get permission as a brewpub from the state. So, it was a lot of information, I'm sorry. There's more, I tried to clear it down. In the state, there's four types of brewery permits, or beer permits, sorry. There is the retail permit, and that's the permit that anyone, like a restaurant, has for on-premise sales or a convenience store has for off-premise sales. There's a retail permit. There's a wholesaler or a distributor permit, and that would be like hard beverage here in town. And then there's a manufacturer permit, and that's what we have as a brewery. And then there's a brewpub permit. So, we have a manufacturer permit. By law, we can't have any of the other permits.
You can add two or more?
A many, a beer manufacturer can only have manufacturing permits. A beer wholesaler can only have wholesale permits, and a retailer can only have retail permits. So, for example, since I own interest in a manufacturing beer permit facility, I cannot have a restaurant that also has a retail beer permit. It's called a three-tier system, and in Mississippi, those are completely separate. Some states do allow breweries to do self-distribution, Mississippi does not. We sell to a distributor, with actually like, like, we have a really good relationship. But, so we sell to our distributor, and then our distributor is in a restaurant. The brewpub was added. I believe that a brewpub owner can have interest in a retail, because some of the, I'm not positive on that, but I saw in the law there is an exception. I think that's because some people who have a brewpub might also have a restaurant, and those are kind of similar pieces of that. But if we wanted to change, we would have to change with the federal government and with the state. And then we would be under the brewpub organization, like, the brewpub rules.
Yes, ma'am. I thank you, I just, I've learned a lot reading all this. I just want to make sure, I guess, we accommodate y'all and future vision. I know that's not your vision now, but things may change, I mean.
So, if the ordinance applies to brewpubs in the leisure district, but it applies to breweries citywide, then, if in the future we change to be a brewpub, we would have to have food at our brewpub if the brewpub ordinance was the leisure district. Right now, we're a brewery, and we're not asking for the brewpub to be citywide. I could see reasons to limit that. The brewpub has some interesting things that can do. What we're asking is for the brewery to be citywide. Because it doesn't quite make sense to us. It doesn't, it doesn't help us, first of all, but it also doesn't quite make sense if you think about what a brewery really is.
City Attorney, can we address that brewery being citywide at a later date?
You could at a later date, or you can address it? I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, the board can do whatever it likes to do, whenever it would like to. So if at some point in time in the future we want to address that, we certainly can.
I think I'll probably lean into this later today, and then coming back and addressing. It's a lot of process, but I, I, you know, my personal opinion has always been that it's a brewpub retained within the leisure and recreation district that I was supporting, so I'll say that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Don't go far. I have questions too.
I, I just, and nothing with alcohol in Mississippi is so, it is not at all simple. Let me be sure that I'm understanding what your current and short-term needs are, and then what, what longer-term needs might be. Right now, y'all do the occasional tours, and you do that under your brewing permit?
Or a manufacturing permit.
Your, your, your manufacturing permit. So you're not a brewpub at this point in time?
Correct.
Okay. I, I'm like Alderman Carver, more than willing to look at some other processes that might work better for you. I know that when you are getting a license to serve beer, they, they have all manners of way that you can do that in, in state law, including special events and other things like that. Would you consider that as something that might be something that we looked at as a city to, to, to issue you a permit, a periodic permit when you wanted to do tours, and those tours would not require food?
So, actually, right now, the tours don't require.
I didn't think they did, okay.
The tours don't require food because the city, the city ordinance says that you have to provide food if you have beer sales.
Right.
And the state law says we can not sell.
You're selling a tour, you're selling a tour, not.
We sell a tour, and we're allowed to provide a six, six-down sample maximum.
Right.
For our period of time.
Right.
So my understanding is that the changes don't impact our tours. Just like when we helped change the state law in 2017 to allow that 10% of beer to be sold at breweries, it explicitly excludes tour beer because the tour beer is not something that is sold. It's more like, if you went to tour a local candle factory, and they let you burn some candles with samples.
Right, right.
To sell their product. But, I guess the difference is they could sell the candle, and we can't.
So, so your concerns are, are not your current businesses, but more of what you might want to do in the future?
So our current, we have not asked the board before to allow us to sell on-premise because we don't currently do that. As we, and we don't, there's not a huge need for it. Like I said, we're talking maybe like 10 gallons of beer a month. It's not really something, that's not our day-to-day. But now that this has been asked, and it seems like, well, maybe Starkville is okay with letting beer be sold without food. You know, as we come back from COVID, maybe we want to have a beer dinner or something, which I know food would be involved in that, but we, probably the caterer would make the money off the food, but then we could sell pints of beer with that. Or maybe we want to say that, well, after you do a tour, you can have one pint of beer. And then, I guess, the 10 gallons, maybe, I don't know, that these people could have a pint of beer. But, tours also aren't our day-to-day, that's not how we make our money. We make it best on our beer to the distributor, to the restaurant. But I guess now it's like, well, we thought about it, it's like, well, there are maybe some things that we could use coming back from COVID that would be nice, even if we could sell this small amount of beer.
I'm, I'm, like Alderman Carver and the rest of us, we've, we've learned a lot. We do have an ordinance in front of us that works for what we were trying to do, and we were trying to look at this from a public safety enforcement perspective, something that we could get our hands around. I'm not opposed either long time to revisiting this. As y'all think through what it is you might want your business model to be. Y'all, y'all have some, some, and, and, y'all have some tricky issues there anyway. If you got into the brewpub piece of it, which would throw you into a restaurant category, it would impact your parking, for instance, with the city, that sort of thing.
We have no intention of becoming a brewpub.
Okay, okay.
That's not, we are a brewery, and that's where we want to be. We have no intention of becoming a brewpub. So the brewpub rules, like, it doesn't apply, brewpubs are really different. They're not just someone who brews beer. It's not just a brewery just decides that, well, now we're going to sell on-site instead. They are totally different, and it's a totally different rule than Carver's, basically.
And, and what I'm, what I'm hearing, and, and, may or not be right, is that it does, that this ordinance does not impact your current operation, but it could impact future business decisions?
That is true. This current ordinance creates an exception that would not apply to it.
Right. And, and if you decided you wanted to look at other exceptions, you could come back to us. We could have time to think about it, resolve the issue that's in front of us today, and then think about it on a broader scale.
I guess that that is true, but it also seems that if what you're, you're talking about the public safety aspect of the current one, if you're ready to reform that, that's a way bigger act as far as selling beer on-premise without food than it is for a brewery act. So, you know, I guess if there's like, everyone has to sell food, the 20, everyone has to make a 25% with brew sales. Nobody has to do it. I would feel on that scale, like a brewpub is about here, and a brewery is over here. And so, it, it's just as confusing to me.
Like I said, nothing is simple with alcohol in Mississippi, so. And we're trying to work within state requirements along with everything else, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Alderman Little?
Thank you for the email the other day, and the, the, with the version, really digest version, to kind of digest some of this information. You hit on something longer I wanted to ask the city attorney, as to the breweries. If, if a brewery decided, like, like Mankey Junction were to try to open up next month if this ordinance passed tonight, would they have to be in the leisure and recreation district to open a brewery versus an industrial area?
No, they could open anywhere, but if they wanted to be exempt from the 25% food sales rule, they would have to be in the leisure and recreation district.
I'm just, a brewery, not a brewpub, a brewery, to understand what you were saying, the law, they're not going to be selling, if it's a true brewery, they're not going to be selling to general public in a brewpub capacity. So they could locate still industrial park without any issues under this current ordinance as it's written and done?
That's correct, and operate as a small craft brewery under Mississippi law. Yes, sir.
Wherever the U D C A allows them. All right, thank you. Alderman Walker?
No questions, no, thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
Mayor, is your business going to be negatively impacted by this ordinance that we're going to pass today?
I think that if you allow new breweries to come into Starkville and to be able to sell their 10% without food, then that does create a negative impact.
So currently, a brewery... So currently, a brewery in Mississippi can sell, can sell their beer product for consumption on-premise, as long as there's 25% food of that toast sales, that business, that's what I understand?
Currently, by state law, a brewery can sell 10% of the beer that they produce for their own brand on-premise for on-premise consumption. But in Starkville, a brewery has to meet a 25% food requirement. So in state level, the brewery can sell 10% of their beer on-premise for on-premise consumption. In Starkville, a brewery can sell 10% of their beer for on-premise consumption if they also sell 25% food.
All right, um, but as current stands, you sell your, your, you sell your product to a, to a distributor. Also a distributor who then sells to, to people who are going to retail, right?
As it currently stands-
You, you the manufacturer to a middleman distributor to a retailer that's gonna pull it out, right?
As it currently stands, in 2017, when the law changed to allow Mississippi breweries to sell 10% of their beer on-premise, we did not begin to sell 10% of our beer on-premise, partly, mostly because we don't make that much, but also because Starkville requires 25% of food sales. So we are not going to sell on-premise consumption beer at 10%. We are not gonna sell it because we don't have a kitchen to make food, because that's not what we do.
And you had no plans to convert to a brew hub?
We had no plan to convert.
So, so at the current time, the, the ordinance that we're considering, the change in ordinance to apply to this particular business, is not going to impact your business?
The ordinance, as it's written today, says that brew hubs and breweries, if they locate in the leisure and recreation district-
I know, I know what's, what's-
So the current ordinance says that new breweries, if they locate in the leisure and recreation district, can sell on-premise beer without food, but we will not be able to because we are currently not located in that district.
Unless you change, your business model to include that, as it stands right now, you're not impacted by this, by this ordinance, correct? As you, as, as you operate right now?
We have never sold beer for on-premise consumption.
Second.
All right. Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor. Mr. Attorney, uh, the way your, the ordinance is currently drafted, there is no prohibition against any brew hub or small craft brewery from being exempt from the food requirement if they locate within the leisure and entertainment district. Am I correct?
Correct.
Additionally, Mr. Attorney, the ordinance, as it is carefully and meticulously written and drafted right now, it is drafted in a manner that allows the city of Starkville to give this exemption from the food sales based on that intent in Title 67 of the Leisure and Entertainment District law, right, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. They work together. That's correct.
Right. And lastly, Mr. Attorney, I noticed and read very carefully, you did a very excellent job in putting this ordinance together. And you mentioned in reference in this ordinance, and not before me, I'm not reading it, I don't have it in my hand before me, but you cited a code section that's in well-settled Mississippi law, which is Section 67-3-65 of the Mississippi Code of 1972. That empowers and authorizes the municipalities to prescribe, to prescribe and set zones and territories as to promote the health, safety, and welfare within our municipality. So with that being said, this board has the authority to uh, exempt brew hubs and small craft breweries from the food requirement and who locate within the leisure entertainment district, correct?
Correct. That's drafted, that's the way-
Yes, sir. And finally, Mr. Attorney, if, if this business in question on Exford Drive, and any business that is located outside the leisure entertainment district, if that business or business desire to be exempt from the food requirement and, and locate within our leisure entertainment district, then the language in the ordinance, if approved by the board, will gladly and legally allow them to sell the beer, alcohol, light wine, without having to meet that food requirement, right, Mr. Attorney?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Aye, o' Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alderman Vaughn, anything?
No, ma'am, I just want to say thank y'all for all your comments, and for some of your answer my question. I mean, they want to speak, they most answer my question.
All right. Thank you. Misses, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your, uh, helping educate us. All right, uh, we are now at a point where we need a motion to continue, or whatever the board's pleasure. Our motion for approval from Alderman Vaughn, do I have a second?
Right.
Second from Alderman Little. If you would please answer yea or nay as the city court calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Alderman Perkins.
Yea.
Vice Mayor, thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous. This motion passes, and the ordinance is, uh, we will take the necessary steps for publication, et cetera, for it to become effective. So, thank you. And thank you again, uh, for helping us. All right, next item on the agenda is the consideration offered by Lee Carson to pay the amount of $2,662.50 on a lien of $45.59.15 for the demolition of 102 Curtis Circle. If y'all recall, 102 Curtis Circle was recently um, deemed by the city, by the board, to be a minister of health, safety, and welfare. We took the opportunity to demolish it using our city curtain. And as a part of that, uh, we have to go through statutory requirements of notice, et cetera, et cetera. And um, we have gone back and researched it. Mr. Latimer's company, he had done the proper notice. Um, unfortunately, somewhere in the provision of information from the county, and on the county records, and the actual um, change of hands of the property, uh, it now belongs to Mr. Carson, who did not receive that notice. Um, and he is suggesting that he could have done it for uh, less than um, using his own company, according to the property, the information that I provided to the board in the packet, uh, less than it cost us to do it. Uh, $45.59.15 was Edward's cost based on his time, his crew, his equipment, uh, taking the property, or taking the demolition um, remains away. And so um, Mr. Carson has said that he will um, pay $2,662.50 if, here and now, if the board were to um, accept that. And so uh, that's the reason this is before you. Mr. Latimer, would you share just a little bit of that in terms of the process?
Yes, ma'am, be happy to. Uh, we did look backboard to confirm that the city properly noticed this under state statute, and we've talked about this many times. You have to mail it out to the address of the property owner, mail notice to the address for uh, the person on file in the tax records, post-notice on the property, and post-notice at City Hall. The city did all that based on our investigation and representation from city staff. And at some point, the property changed hands. The law does not compel or require the city to do a title search on these 21191 demolitions, and so the city went ahead and demolished the property. So all the city would be doing, if it would be inclined to do so, and it's y'all's call, of course, is to just accept Mr. Carson's cost estimate instead of the previous cost estimate um, provided by staff. The theory being a bird in the hand might be better than two in the bush.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Latimer. And this, this was, uh, this, it has clearly been done. So uh, Mr. um, Kelp has provided us what, based on the time spent, et cetera, et cetera, the use of machinery, the cost of, of doing the demolition. So um, I bring it to the board because from a negotiating standpoint, I wanted to make sure that the board was aware, and that if they wanted to accept the $2,662.50, as in Mr. Latimer's term of a bird in the hand, could do so. If not, we can, someone can provide a different number in between $2,662.50 and $45.59.15. So I leave it to the board. Do I-
Call him here?
No, Mr. Carson is not. And, and uh, that would be a swap of emails between him and me. And I just put this on last minute because it came to me within the last three or four days. And so I wanted to provide it to the board so we could move forward or determine a path to move forward. So um, Mr. uh, okay, well, I was gonna, let me do one, two, three. Um, Alderman Carver, anything from you, sir?
I feel comfortable making a motion. I'm gonna wait till the rest of the board members, if they have any comments they want to say.
Okay. Call him, Sistrunk?
Um, I think Mr. Kent is here in the, in the audience. Um, are, are you comfortable with your estimate?
Edward, if you would come down so we can-
There's pretty big variance there, and I know what we pay our city workers, so.
Especially because we put together the actual time of our labor force that was out there.
Okay.
Based on their pay rate, uh, minus plus benefits, the city spends. We also apply a standard FEMA-adopted hourly rate for all of our-
Okay.
So that's how we arrive at that.
Okay.
So we also mention, we also itemize any materials we have to purchase, like stills and, or-
Okay.
I see typically all demolition areas to minor consumption of children.
So, so your numbers are well documented. Thank you.
Anything else, Alderman Sistrunk? Okay. Uh, Alderman Little, I'm sorry.
Um, Chris, this would be a question to you, the city attorney.
Yes, sir.
Any legal standing to challenge this?
I, I, I don't think so. I think the board's decision today is just, how do you value the present value of money? Because you're looking at a discounted fee today as opposed to a lien that you may recoup at some time in the future for a higher amount. And so which one, from a public policy standpoint, does the board prefer? But I do believe the city acted legally in this endeavor.
Anything else, Alderman?
So he, the property has changed hands. He, he is the new owner, and the lien was not addressed, by the hand of the president, and was sold, and he didn't transfer it over?
The lien wasn't on there yet, because we didn't-
It had not been applied, but now it's attached to his property.
Well, I haven't enrolled it yet, because I, I got in touch with Mr. Carson to say that if you would like to pay this before I attach the lien to it, would you like to do so? And that was when he came back with an email. And y'all can send me forth to do, I mean, we can, we can save this to another time and, and see if there's a, a negotiating opportunity, but this is just, I needed to bring it forward so that we could at least determine if we want to do something-
I don't have a problem working on, you know, it's kind of a conflict that he's, he's figuring his figures. We obviously want to pay less, which I understand anybody would. And then we've got the city, which got hard documented figures from real time that we performed the actual work on. But in spirit compromise, I would, I would average two together, which comes up to $36.10.83. Recommend that.
Do you want to make a motion to that, sir?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, all right. I have a motion from Alderman Little for uh, $36.10.83. All right. Thank you. All right, let's see. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Sistrunk. All right, let me continue on down the line here, okay? Alderman Walker, anything? Any comments?
Mayor, my only comment would be, I think the, the val, real value is that this property has now been demolished, and based on Mr. Carson's uh, estimate, I would recommend that any of these like previous items that we've already addressed tonight, that as we get ready to look at demolition, that we need to make Mr., that sure that Mr. Carson has the opportunity to put a bid on demolishing uh, any future buildings in the city.
All right. Well, thank you, Alderman Walker. I'll, I'll pose that to him. And as we come out of this and we see where we go from here, so, yes, his, his costs were significantly less according to his numbers. So, thank you, sir. Uh, Alderman Beatty?
Mayor, if we average 22, make the counter off on that, and you have to take it where, where we stand. And what's, what's the standing then?
I, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
If we average what, what Alderman Little said, we take the difference, we take the average 26.62 and 45.59, strike a middle on that, and he, he doesn't take, and we propose that, it's counted off to him. He doesn't take it where we-
Well, then I will go enroll the lien for 45.59.15.
He owns a property, property's been not demolished, and we have a lien on it, correct? So we have $500.
We will put that lien on it.
Mayor, let me just add, I, I think we would enroll the lien for the blended amount if the board makes that order tonight.
Okay.
That would be the current, the current offer on table.
Can we amend that, Chris, to, you know, if it's rejected, that we apply the full amount for the lien?
Yes, it's your order. You can, you can amend it.
I would like to amend it to-
Yeah, that's right.
If it's rejected by Mr. Carson, then we'll apply the full amount.
All right, Alderman, you had a second, Alderman Sistrunk, that's second. She will, she will do that, so we will reflect that it is amended to um, if, if it rejects the blended offers, then it's about 59.15. All right, thank you. That's-
How long is Mr. Carson, over the profit before this came up?
A few months, six months. Okay, all right, thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins?
Mayor, just very briefly, um, you know, I, I'll certainly support the motion that's on the floor, but that, that certainly would support your recommendation, the city attorney's recommendation. We don't, and, and of course, we want to get as much money as we can, but, you know, we're gonna go into litigation on this. Let's say this goes into litigation, we're gonna spend more than the difference of Mr. Carson's offer versus what he's asking, but, but of course, you know, whatever the board wants to do, I'm fine. I'm fine with the gentleman from three and the second from two. But I just wanted to point out, the attorney made some very careful words at the beginning of this conversation, it's best to get the bird in hand, because let's say we're sending to court to litigate this, we're gonna be out of more than $2,500. So, but whatever the board wants to do, I'm fine. But I just wanted to point that out as a legal aspect, but, but I'm not against the gentleman from three and the second from two, but I just wanted to mention, if we get into litigating this at this point, we're gonna pay more than difference to the attorney in court. And that's why he said it's best to get a bird in hand, but I'm yielding, whatever the board wants to do, I'm gonna vote for it. So it doesn't matter. I'll support the motion, but I do want the board to consider that information. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. We do have a motion in a second. I'll go to Alderman Vaughn, and then we'll have a, have a vote. Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, I'm gonna favor what, what motion that we have at the table.
Okay. All right, uh, if you would please then answer yea or nay as the city court calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Naye.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, Vaughn, I believe I understood Alderman Walker correctly. That would be a vote of six to one. The motion carries. All right, thank you. Next item is claims docket. There are motions. Motion from Alderman Little, do I have a second?
Sure.
Second from Alderman Beatty. Please answer yea or nay as the city court calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Oh. That's another claim socket. Somebody slow me down. I apologize. Oh, I apologize. My bad. This is the TIF, so.
Wouldn't finish on the docket.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, let's go ahead. We, we did the, we did the claim socket. Let's go ahead. We'll, we will take that up as a verbal from me, which is item E Finance Administration Number One. So my apologies. It's that long, that's a long thing. All right, yes, it is.
Withdrawing the motion, withdrawing the motion on the claim socket?
No, we're gonna, we, so we will continue with the claim socket. I would just, we'll just move it as having moved up on the agenda.
Okay. Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Naye.
Alderman Vaughn.
Naye.
All right, by a motion of five to two, the claim socket passes now. Again, back to board business, item four, which is a resolution of the TIF. Um, that is the invoking the authority granted to municipalities by the legislature with respect to tax increment financing. That's set forth in Chapter 45, Title 21, Mississippi Code of 1972, is amended. The public hearing be conducted in connection with the proposed tax increment financing plans for the Garen Manufacturing Redevelopment Project, City of Starkville, August 2019, is amended and restated February 2021 for related purposes. Hello, I just saw the word "public hearing." Mr. Latimer, was this supposed to be under a public hearing?
Yeah, you gotta have a public hearing.
Okay, well, it was cut away under board business, so we will, we will have a public hearing. I will do that first. Um, if you would please, anyone, I will open this as a public hearing. Again, this is about an amendment to a TIF that was adopted by the board. Anyone wishing to speak to this item now is your opportunity. Anyone wishing to speak to the TIF?
I have a comment for a few figures in the last-
This will be at time. This will, yes, yes.
We'll have to have two public hearings around.
Uh, Mr. Latimer, we only have to have one public hearing for this because it's an amendment, or what?
No, just one public hearing for any TIF, so just one.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Castleberry?
Yeah, Mark Castleberry from Ward for Ward. Mayor, Vice Mayor Alderman, thank you very much for your consideration of this. I've typed up the comments on the active information. Uh, there's a slide also of the project that we're, that this is in relation to. But I, again, wish, thank you for your consideration or request to increase our, your TIF commitment. Uh, but I purchased this land in September of twenty nineteen because the strong retail is growing, announcing terms are stable, and very few have ever heard of COVID-nineteen or coronavirus. Since that time, brick and mortar retailers are struggling, many bankruptcies occurring, leading to few retailers being heated during these challenging times, being very desirable. In addition, announcing of retail developments has become much more challenging. We find ourselves in a situation of increased construction costs due to skilled labor shortage, significant material increases, and we have had soil and site issues. Whenever, whenever I've been before you before, I've tried to be very careful not to be an alarmist or to overstate my position. Not to cry wolf, I guess, if that's where the hood of the sky is falling. Did you get a relate, uh, uh, something that actually occurred? It's not a, not a anti-seal, it's, it's just what happened. Uh, December, I had a conversation, had a phone call with, a phone meeting with our anchor RE, anchor grocery on this project regarding us to meet some contractual obligations that have this center go forward. In that conversation, I told them I can't go forward. Uh, the, it was not working for us, uh, it was not working at all. Uh, we could not go forward unless we could find enough savings, additional incentives, and increased revenue for the project, and I asked them for additional time. Before having a conversation, our team had done a lot of work, because we'd either want to make that call. Uh, and since that time, we have been working diligently. We have found some saves in construction. Unfortunately, a lot of those did nothing but offset the increased cost of construction, brings back where we were, but we're, we're continuing to work on that. We've actually done some, well, better negotiating, we have gotten some increases on some income areas, or we're hoping for, but I am asking you tonight, or today, to help close the gap with a increase on the incentive. We are fortunately marketed to quality retailers that have weathered these times very well. All of these things that our lenders consider a good credit risk, I believe them, I believe that makes them also a great, stable addition to our community. What has also not changed is the economic input to the community, and I will just kinda go over some numbers, um, to tell you about the project. Number one, if I'm, if we're successful, uh, with this request, we're looking at breaking ground in July or August of twenty-one. We'll need those. Uh, the site for the Garen Project is about ten acres, the overall site. Uh, the center is made up of approximately eighty-five thousand, two, uh, square feet of retail, plus the two, in addition to that, is two out parcels. We're at the far end, you know? That, go over, there you go. Uh, that would be an international grocery anchor, nineteen thousand feet. We have some small shops in this area. Here, we're working with a six-thousand-foot national shoe retailer, twelve-thousand-foot, uh, pet supply retailer, uh, ninety-five-hundred-square-foot, uh, national retailer that targets teens and tweens. Uh, then we have a ten-thousand-foot national retailer of cosmetic and beauty supplies, and a twenty-two-thousand-square-foot national discount household goods retailer. In addition, of course, comply with a hundred-year, uh, water detention, this project, in addition to the items of the tree organelles and such. Uh, the out parcels are undecided, though we're getting strong interest from food concepts, professional medical and financial institutions. Our project budget is estimated about twenty million, and that's not including the out parcels, uh, 'cause that's undetermined yet, how that'll go forward. Uh, the tenants themselves will spend millions more in tenant improvement of their spaces, and of course, inventory. We come, we estimate the, uh, center, when the center's completed, we'll employ approximately two, two hundred people. We estimate the center will produce thirty-five point four million dollars in annual sales tax, which would create, uh, forty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-five in ad valorem, and, uh, excuse me, thirty-five million in annual sales, not sales tax. Four hundred and fifty-nine thousand in sales tax. Now, I understand you're thinking, well, I can't spend that, uh, you know, if we're giving us TIF, but keep in mind on day one, not impacted by the TIF, the schools would receive a hundred and one thousand dollars. The tourism convention, the two percent tax, would get approximately a hundred thousand. The parks and rec, one percent tax, gets fifty thousand annual, and the non-revenue committed section of the sales tax, day one, would, would put about a hundred thousand dollars into, to the city general fund. I believe, I hope you will see this a tremendous opportunity and investment for our community financially, you know, financially, in addition to quality of life. I know this is a big ask. I wish to put my money where my mouth is. I have had a long relationship with the city and have two existing TIFs that I'm party to. I am offering to execute the appropriate documents to de-obligate the city for the amounts not already issued at Middleton Marketplace, the former coal plant, and/or pending issuances at the Cooley Center. This will remove approximately four million dollars from the city's potential TIF liability. Ask you to support of today's actions to call for public comment, future approval, then I can report back to our future, for our potential retailers that we have a viable project. You have any questions? I'm now open for questions or...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Castleberry. Well, we, we're still in a public hearing phase, so let me see if anyone else wishes to speak to it. We got, all right, anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Anyone else? All right, I will close it as a public hearing, and we will, uh, go on this, um, ward by ward. Uh, Alderman Carver, anything you'd like to say about this item?
Not so much, other than the, you know, what we spoke about, the relinquishment of your former TIF. You saying the Middleton, and what was the other one, that's approximately four million in TIF? That's right. Okay, I just, I was just right next to you talking. That, um, again, gives me great comfort. I'm gonna kinda let Alderman Sistrunk make the comments. He and I spoke, but I haven't really got to listen as a bud chair, uh, what your thoughts are and, and financial background of what you think, uh, this move, is it good for the city, or bad for the city, or what are your thoughts?
I, I think it is, like most life, complicated. Um, I think in all in all, it is very much in, in the benefit of the city. The things that made it a good project for us before, when we made the initial TIF agreement there, the redevelopment of that industrial side into a retail center on the main thoroughfare here in, in Starkville there on Highway twelve, the construction jobs that will be created, the retail jobs and opportunities that will be created, um, the, the image for the city as a, as a, a shopping destination will hopefully bring some people into town. I think it will, um, um, take some cannibalization, um, in terms of sales tax at existing groceries, but I think it will be offset by these new businesses that we don't, of, of types that we don't really have right now. Um, I, the, in terms of the money, we were already committed to fifty percent of our sales tax to be used to size these bonds. We're going to sixty percent, so it's, it's about fifty thousand dollars of additional sales tax money that would be used to size these bonds. It is incumbent upon, of course, Mr. Um, Mr. Castleberry and his group to make the project a reality, um, to generate the sales. Um, if the sales don't happen, the bonds won't be this amount, so, um, it, it, it is, um, it is in his best interest, and I think in the city's best interest, um, if we could, could move forward with this.
Alderman Sistrunk, could I get these?
I think that's all I've got.
Alderman Little?
Uh, thank you, Alderman Little. All the projects you've done here in town have been excellent. Uh, I hate to see you coming back on, on the TIF, but I understand, uh, construction costs are, as the price number lately, it's about three times what it was quite a year ago. Um, no, we didn't say it there, but, uh, I'm gonna support this project, it's done. I think it needs to happen, that developing that car over there on twelve is gonna be an asset to the city, a long term, and, uh, we need to move the call, I'm gonna support you.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. My, my question is really for the city attorney. City attorney, or, I have, the, the real question I have is not can we make an amendment to the TIF, but what do we need to do to ensure, uh, what Mr. Castleberry talked about is the, the announcing of the, the previous TIFs that he would be on the hook for? What is the process that the city needs to do, that if we approve this tonight, that it also locks that in?
We need to put something before the board that formally, formally does away with the Middleton Marketplace TIF and the Cooley Center TIF. We could, um, abandon those plans, and it's just a resolution that would come before the board, and we can work with our bond council to bring forward.
Thank you. So that could be something that, that doesn't have to be, uh, this could be approved, approved tonight with th- those other, uh, documents being approved at the next board meeting?
Yes, sir. If the bond council can get them ready that soon, uh, and I anticipate that he could, uh, it would be, it would be doable just like that.
Okay, th- thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Anything further, Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beatty.
No, ma'am, thank you.
Hi, Vice Mayor Perkins?
I'm ready to vote, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Um, let's see, in this case, we do need a motion. I have got one, one thing, all right, I have a motion for Alderman Little for approval of the TIF as, as, uh, on the agenda. Do I have a second, sir? Second from Alderman Vaughn. I do wanna add one little thing.
I have a friendly amendment.
Okay, uh, we have a friendly amendment?
Uh, to make it contingent upon the resolution of the two outstanding TIFs.
Okay, um, and, uh, second, uh, Alderman, Alderman Vaughn, you're good with that, that, uh, amendment?
Yes, sir.
So the amendment is to reflect that it is contingent on the resolutions on the TIFs being abandoned, the existing TIFs being abandoned. Deobligated, was the phrase that was probably more accurate. All right, so we do have a motion in a second, and I do still want to say something, because I do think that this project is gonna be one of those things that tips the balance for us. I think we have leakage to our surrounding neighborhoods or surrounding cities that will stay in the city once this is up and running, and so I do believe this is one of those things that will, um, be greatly to our benefit in terms not only of actually the, the dollars, but keeping people in town and, and becoming a destination for, um, for shopping that we aren't necessarily now, uh, uh, considered to be one, so. All right, I have a motion in a second. If you would, please, answer with an amendment. If you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Beatty.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yay.
All right, by a vote of six to one, the motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, next item is, we have consideration of appointment of a candidate to the Starkville Municipal Airport Board, and I am not absolutely certain that we have both gentlemen, uh, on the, on the Zoom. Do we have Mr. Addy, Mr. Clements? Do we have any additional, either Mr. Gray or Mr. Mount, Mr. Metz? Oh, okay.
I'm present.
All right. Okay, so we do have two. All right, great. What we'll do then is, uh, we will, we will take Mr. Gray first. If you would like to come share with us your thoughts about this position and why you're interested. And a little background, please.
I'm William Gray, I'm, uh, just, I've been in Starkville. Been living in Starkville for nineteen years, and been around aviation, so that's great. Uh, flown on planes since eight thousand and ten. Multi-engine, commercial instrument pilot, have an airplane out here at the anchor. I've got a, you know, feel like I could help with, uh, some of the things that's getting done here. Basically, yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you live in town?
I do live in town.
Okay. Oh, okay, all right, thank you, sir. All right, um, then if you would, take a seat, and we'll, uh, Mr. William Barrett Metz, Mr. Metz, you're on the line as well?
I am.
All right, would you be so kind as to share a little bit of your background and your interest in this position?
Uh, yes, I'm a regional sales manager for Taylor Machine Works in Louisville, and we have a home there in Starkville, Country Club Estates, and I, I'm also a pilot, private pilot, and also own a plane and rent a hangar at the airport. Um, I've seen a lot of, uh, improvements, uh, to LMS here in Lu- Louisville by a lot of different grants that Mr. Foster has somehow or another gotten for this local airport, and I would like to, you know, pursue possibly working with the board and bringing some more grants to Starkville to help make that airport. Uh, it's a very nice airport, very, very good runway, uh, but, you know, there's, it's a lot of people that come and go in and out of the airport, and the facilities might need to be enhanced, a little bit larger and so forth, so. I heard about the opportunity for the board coming open, and, uh, I just decided I would go ahead and request that you consider me for that position, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Metz. How long have you been in Starkville?
Uh, we've lived there five years. We, uh, hurt that tornado back some years ago, relocated us in Starkville, so...
Okay, well, all right, I understand that. All right, thank you. All right, uh, if you would, stand by, and I'll see if the board members have any questions, so. Uh, Alderman Carver, any questions?
I, I don't, just thank y'all for both y'all applying. It's a pretty, a very, very tough decision, um, just what we've read through, and, and I think I'll, um, be more familiar with Mr. Gray, but that's not, not anything we said against Mr. Metz, and anybody that doesn't get it, we're always encouraged, uh, to, to come back and, and try again. Anytime, um, you know, we can get qualified candidates in any position with a board, commission, or anything with the city, it's, it's a very valuable resource for us, as Alderman, so thank you both for putting your name in the hat. Thank you.
Alderman Sistrunk?
Um, two good candidates, and, um, that, that makes the decision, um, harder always, so thank you both for your interest.
Alderman Little?
Uh, as I said, you know, two great candidates. Uh, from my ward, I'm disappointed I don't even want a, um, one in my neighborhood, I don't know why, um, but, uh, I appreciate you putting, you willing to serve and, and put in, both of you. Uh, a lot of times, it's just one person, and sometimes I can't find anybody to fit, uh, to fill some of these boards and committees that we have, so it's, it's appreciated that y'all are interested and willing to serve the community.
All right, thank you. Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am, other than, again, just echoing and saying thank you for your, your gentleman, uh, for cons, for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Beatty?
Two excellent candidates, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you, Castleberry.
All right, we're at the lick log, guys, so do we have, I need a motion.
I'll make a, a motion of, for consideration of forming a candidate to the Starkville Municipal Airport Board with Mr. William Gray still on the spot.
All right, I have a motion for Mr. Gray to, uh, be nominated to fill that position for Alderman Carver. Do I have a second?
Second, ma'am.
I have a second from Alderman Beatty. If you would, please, answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Beatty. Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
It is unanimous, uh, Mr. Gray, we will, we're to your service, and Mr. Metz, thank you so much for putting your name in the hat. I love having fellow pilots in town, so, um, if there's another position that opens up, please, please consider it, or any other position in the city that opens up, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, when we have done the claim docket, a little prematurely, but we did do the claim docket, so we are now at a point where we need to go into a closed determination session. I have a motion from Alderman Little to close session, do I have a second? Second from Alderman Vaughn. If you would, please, answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yay.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yay.
All right, it is unanimous, we'll go into closed session to determine the need for executive session. If you would, please, um, exit the room, clear the room, and we will begin that process. And in executive session, the board voted to approve payment of six thousand dollars from this cofferal to purchase permanent easement as a reasonable and prudent way to proceed with land acquisition for the old West Point Road Bridge. The board further voted, uh, to, um, deny the agreement and to uphold the reconciliation confirmation by the department head, and then the board also further, um, approved the, um, what are we gonna call this? The, um...
Letter of engagement with David Scharrell for intervention utilities versus CBA Federal Energy Regulatory Commission litigated matter.
Yep, that's what we did. Okay, and, so, in that, making that announcement, I will also say that, uh, give me a quick one to do a work session. In accordance with the notice required under Mississippi Code, statute twenty-five, four, forty-one thirteen, board will be having a work session on the twenty-sixth of February, which is next Friday. At ten a.m., the meeting will be held at City Hall, the second floor conference room, at one-ten West Main Street, Public and Media.